All right, good evening. Welcome to the October 11th, 2016, meeting of the Manchester Town Council. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance. You guys.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't say anything last week.
Very good, thank you. Did you hear the scouts sound like they all knew that by heart? Didn't hear any missteps in there? I think it was not your first time. First order of business tonight is approval of the August 9th, 2016 minutes. We have two minutes to go through tonight, so we'll do those separately, just make sure we do it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the August 9th, 2016 minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And then we have the September 13th, 2016 minutes from last month.
I'll make a motion we accept the September 13th, 2016 minutes as submitted.
I'll second that.
Motion is second to approve as submitted. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Again, two treasures here. We have the treasure report from August 16th. We have a motion to accept the treasure report.
I make a motion we accept the treasures report for August 2016.
I'll second that.
Motion is second for August 2016 treasure report. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And then we have the check register, but not the treasure report yet, for September 2016. Motion to accept the check register.
I make a motion that we accept the September 2016 check register.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second on the check register. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mayor's report, a couple of items here going back into September. Manchester hosted the Towne Municipal League Quarterly Dinner, so every once every two years, each of the towns in Carroll County hosts a dinner for the other elected officials in the other towns. So our turn was September 2016. It was over at the Activities Building, over at here at the Carnival Grounds. The Manchester Volunteer Fire Department catered, did a real nice job. All the folks in town here, including the police department, town employees, we all, everybody pulled together, put that on. So it was a very nice event. We were able to show off the current progress of the new building to some of the other folks around the county. I think that went really well. Before we go too far, let's see, we have Scout Troop 320 here tonight. You guys, some of you guys are standing. You guys mind standing up so everybody can see you? So, welcome. It's a good group of scouts. You guys here for merit badge? Not because I'm a great speaker. All right, welcome. I don't think it'll be an exceptionally long meeting tonight, so if you're here afterward and you have any questions, I'd be glad to stick around with you guys. Let's see. Halloween is coming up, so it's October 11th now, so Halloween will be, I'm sure this is in the other reports as well, but Halloween, October 31st. Trick or treating, if I'm wrong, chief, is 6:30 to 8:30.
6:30, 8:30.
If you do not want to participate, then please turn off your front porch light so that hopefully everybody will leave you alone.
No clown masks.
No clown masks?
No clown masks.
Yeah. Make our job a little easier and don't play in the gray area, I guess, this year. I think that is all I have. Debbie, you gonna hit the tree planting report?
Yes.
Okay. I think that is all I have. We have October 30th, so we've been, there's been a new combined Town Hall Police Station in the works for a number of years, going back to Councilman Warner and I, I think maybe the only two left remaining. And that process started probably a decade ago. But we're gonna dedicate that building, and we have an opening coming up October 30th. Councilman Smith and Director of Finance, Kelly Baldwin, have been putting together that program. So it looks like that's coming along very well. We certainly want to invite people from the community or the scouts, so if you want to come out and see the new building on October 30th. All right, with that, I'll turn it over to the Towne Administrator. Oh, one more thing, I'm sorry. Also back in September, September 11th, there was a service across the street here at UCC Trinity Church of Christ. Couple of us went over, and we were presented with some thank yous under the Manchester Volunteer Fire Department, police, not the police chief, but the police department was represented, and a young lady there made these for each of the departments, which was very nice. First name is Adriana. So thank you for that. With that, I'll turn it over to the Town Administrator.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers of the community. We scout Troop 320. Appreciate you being here. We'll go ahead and start with the September 2016 Administrative Report. Under Pending Items, there's been no changes to either the S.H.A. project or the Sheets project. As Mayor Warner alluded to, the Town Hall Police Department's dedication is scheduled for Sunday, October 30th, at 1:00 p.m. And hopefully on Monday, the 31st, we'll be open for business at our new facility. One of the pending issues is the sidewalk issues on Westminster Street. You'll see, we did send out certified letters for the second time, and you'll see that in the monthly code enforcement update, which that's next on my agenda, so you can check back on that. Under Miscellaneous Items, we did have a Sustainable Community Workgroup Meeting on September the 28th. The group, they were given 12 key goals. This list will be narrowed down to the top four or five, and it does appear that the continuance of the Main Street beautification process is a top priority. Again, I'm recommending to the Mayor and the Council to make this work group a standing committee. We have some good people on that group, and I'm just passing that on to the Mayor and Council for your consideration. The Maryland Department of Transportation Tour Meeting with Secretary Ron was scheduled for Thursday, October 13th, at 1:30 at the Reagan Room. That has been changed and rescheduled to Thursday, November 3rd, at 2:30 at the same location, the Reagan Room at the Carroll County Office Building. I would strongly recommend that we be well represented by the elected officials. Commissioner Wance did make mention at his Town Hall meeting that he wants to make Route 30 a top priority. I would recommend that if one of you can attend that meeting and voice your concerns on behalf of the town, I think it would be very much appreciative, so just if you can make that. This Thursday, October 13th, the Manchester Valley High School Advisory Council will be hosting a business welcome and networking event that begins at 7:00 p.m., and the event will be sponsored by the Hampstead Merch Association and the Manchester Area Merch Association. So if you can attend that. Also, something that I don't have on my report, we currently have one opening on our Ethics Board that needs to be filled, and unfortunately, we're going to have a second opening because one of the members is moving out of the area. So we have to keep that in the back of our mind to fill those positions as soon as we can. That's a three-member panel, so we will have two openings coming up. So I want to bring that to your attention. Okay, moving right along. You have in front of you the September Public Works Report, and you also have in front of you the Monthly Water and Waste Water Stats Report for September. One action item that we have tonight is a replacement truck bid for our water department. Under Waste Water, the operators are, they've completed some operation and maintenance on our sludge press at the Waste Water Treatment Plant. Under Storm Water, both the Route 27 and Whispering Valley Storm Water Management Facility projects are moving forward. The Long Lane Storm Drain Pipe Repair, that's complete. And another action item that you have in front of you tonight is the repair of some storm drain inlets. And you have those bids in front of you. Under Maintenance Roads and Parks, the Skate Park Relocation Project is complete, and I want to thank Dave Brown, our Park Supervisor, and Ken Black, one of our maintenance crew members, for spearheading the project, and of course, all the maintenance crew for pitching in, and they did a very good job up there. The Nature Center well, I'm working with Bill Skinner. As far as the location plans to move forward on that, our water department did complete the pump test out there, and that's a strong 10-gallon per minute well, and it does show some coliform bacteria in it, but that's not a problem. We can take care of that. And I believe Councilperson Howe, we're gonna be working with Bill later on this week for the tree planting. Bill called me today.
Is the town gonna dig the hole?
Yes.
Thank you. That was on my list.
Also, I wanted to remind the residents that our brush pickup will be Tuesday, the 18th. And also, bulk trash pickup is scheduled for Wednesday, the 19th, and call a huge if you have some large items for bulk trash. Other than that, just those two action items, that's it. Any questions for me?
Steve, I seem to recall, my old brain's not remembering things much anymore, 10, 12 or more years ago when we were talking about a bypass, and word came out of then, I think, Governor Glenn Danning's office, that the town of Manchester's population did not warrant a bypass. Then we probably had 3,000 residents. But somebody did a study, determined there was some enormous amount of traffic coming from Pennsylvania through Manchester. And there was a study that was done. Has anything been done since then?
I actually doubt that. And that's one thing, that's a selling point, because, you know, the traffic doesn't stop at the Pennsylvania state line. I would venture to say probably 20 or more percent of the traffic heading southbound on 30 is coming from Pennsylvania. Even though the state line's there, sometimes you have to go past those borders. And what bothers me is, if you all remember back a few years ago, the Manchester bypass and the 20-town bypass were like tied, you know? And then we got pushed back to the last page of the recommendation to a bullet point. And, you know, that's uncalled for. And possibly, if we do have Commissioner Wance in our corner, now's the time to try to do as much as we can
Absolutely.
to push the issue.
Okay. Any other questions for the Town Administrator?
Just one more about the dump site. Have we made a final decision on that? I'm glad a number of people...
Yes, the dump site is closed. That is correct. That is closed. Once we start the Storm Water Management Project out on 27, you know, that's gonna be completely filled in out there. So that dump site is closed out there.
Okay.
One thing, Mayor, that I forgot to allude to. The Director of Finance and myself are working on something in regards to our water billing. And we may have, well, we're going to have to change our way of thinking. Now, a lot of the water bills are paid online, and we're in a process of coming up with something to make it easier. Here's the bottom line. When you pay your bill online, the town office receives, and Kelly, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The town receives them in the loop with numerous checks from our water customers. That, our policy right now states that we go by the postmark. That envelope normally is not postmarked. So Kelly and our water billing specialist went to the post office, and the post office is not required to put a postmark on that. So we receive these checks within that envelope. There could be as many as 25 or 30 checks. So we have to sort through those specific checks and possibly, near the end of the billing cycle, near the 30th of the month, we may have 20 checks that are on time, but there could be five that are late. But using the policy that we currently have, we go by the postmarks, okay? So that's an issue. So we're working through those issues to try to make it fair for everybody. And that, I just wanted to bring the Mayor and Council up to speed on that.
So that's as a response to the conversation we had last month?
It could be, and also previous late charges that were applied to bills along the way. But currently, our staff follows the policy that you folks adopted, and that's what they go by. So now, you know, with the way the system works as far as paying your bills online, we have to rethink our policy. So that will probably come back to you next month for approval, our recommendations, staff's recommendations.
Right. It should just fit what the realities of how people pay are, and then not punish folks if they pay electronically, but we just didn't get an envelope from a clearinghouse in time.
Right. I believe, right. And you have to remember that they do hold your money, and legally, they can hold your money for several days, so they're using your money. But at the end of the day, I was kinda surprised that every piece of mail that goes through the post office does not have to be postmarked. That just truly amazed me, so...
So is there an electronic record or any kind of documentation that when someone pays online? I pay my water bill by check, so I have no idea how this works in regards to that. Is there a record where, even though we haven't received the check, that they have processed it?
Well, the difference...
Yes, they can go back, correct. They can go back, but we have the check in hand from the clearinghouse.
So the clearinghouse does not submit a submission date?
That's, we can see when that resident paid the bill by their check, but when we get a bulk, you know, we'll get as many as 35, possibly more checks together.
And have a range of dates in it.
Correct.
Right, so there's just a chance that per the policy, something lapses over that 30th and really shouldn't work? I mean, our policy was just ineffective, we want people to pay on time, right? So that we're not chasing people around, yeah?
That's the bottom line. That's correct, yeah.
But we don't want to punish somebody when it's just not the intent we're trying to do.
And the policy was made when, you know, online banking wasn't that popular at the time, which it is now, so...
Right. All right, I think this is something we can sort through and figure out.
Yes, it's no problem. We just have to take the time to, you know, look at every avenue and that, so...
Right. So we have a couple of action items. Does it matter which one we do first to you, Steve?
No, it doesn't matter. It's up to you.
So let me start with the truck bid.
Yes, this is for a replacement truck to replace one of our vehicles in our water department. You have to remember, this is for a utility truck, and currently, it would be replacing a pickup truck. It'll be for a 2017 one-ton pickup truck with utility body, lift gate, and plow. The water fund is budgeted $50,000 without a trade-in, and we are recommending to go with Apple Ford for the chassis itself, and then Intercon with the Omaha utility body, lift gate, and snowplow, and the total package is $54,341.25. Apple Ford does have a state contract, and we're piggybacking on to them. One thing that we, I want the Council to take into consideration, that our water department would like to keep the '08 Chevy until we get through the winter time, and we'll make a decision in the spring if we can go ahead and get rid of that or if we can come up with the offset of $4,300 to keep the truck. So our recommendation would be to go with the Apple Ford/Intercon bid for $54,341.25. If we decide to sell the truck come spring, you're probably looking at a conservative figure of $8,000 to $9,000 for that trade-in, without a doubt, so...
But if we need the additional...
I gotta go.
Okay.
I'll call you in a minute.
Okay, I'll handle yours. So, Steve, the thought process is partially there that if we needed the additional capacity, we wouldn't be able to replace that for the difference of $4,000, which we could probably, within the same budget, capture in the spring anyway.
That is correct, yes.
Right. And then what are the, what are the range of functions that the new truck will be doing?
Well, that specific truck will be a utility truck for our water department, for our people out in the field. It will not only be used as a tool truck, it'll also be used as a snowplow, and it'll be used as a lift gate, because the guys take chemicals out to the stations, bag chemicals and chlorine. So it'll actually be served in three different capacities or more.
Okay. Any other questions on the truck? We have a motion to move forward.
Make motions. Is it necessary to get into great detail, other than saying, accepting the Apple Ford/Intercon bid of $4,341.25?
That's fine, that's a package, right, it's a package deal.
For the truck chassis and lift gate.
So my read on this right now is, although, you know, most items we are able to come in a little under budget, I don't know that we necessarily would need a motion on the '08 at this time. I think we can move forward with the...
You can move forward with the 2017 bid, and then I'll be coming back in the spring of the year with the decision.
Right. And then we'll review the style of recommendation on that truck in the spring.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we accept the Apple Ford/Intercon bid in the amount of $54,341.25 for the 2017 truck chassis and Omaha utility body.
I'll second the motion.
So motion is second. Any other discussion or questions on the truck? Hearing that, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Then we have the storm drain repair bids.
Correct. We solicited bid for repair of 16 storm drain inlets. We had a budget of $21,000. We received bids back from L.R. Holman Incorporated. Their bid come in at $19,559. And we received a bid from Stan Balls Incorporated. Their bid come in at $27,098. Staff recommends going with L.R. Holman for $19,559. And that will repair 16 inlets at various locations through the town. York Street, Trotter Mill Road, and there's several others.
So regular maintenance item, things have to be repaired from time to time?
Yes.
At least they'll all be done this year, I guess?
Yes, that's, these will be taken care of before winter.
Before winter, okay. All right, are there any other questions or a motion on the move forward with the storm drain repair bids?
I'll make, do you have any questions? I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from L.R. Holman Incorporated for repairing the 16 storm drains for the amount of $19,559.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second. Any other questions or comments on the storm drain? Hearing that, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Steve, are those the only two actual items? Do you have another one in there?
No, that's it, sir.
That's it? Anything else for the Town Administrator before we move on? All right, next order, and then next item on the agenda is the police report. Obviously, Chief Hess had to run out, sort of the nature of small towns and working chiefs. Sometimes things come up and you're not able to attend meetings. So I'll read through the report that he had submitted. Manchester Police Department responded to 44 calls for service during the past month. Nine people are criminally charged, two Part I crimes involving theft. Part I crimes would be more serious crimes as opposed to misdemeanors. During September 2016, let's see, of the nine arrests, three DUIs, one assault, traffic-related, two outstanding warrants. They had 63 traffic enforcement stops, 34 citations, 29 warnings. The focus of the enforcement was Charmel Drive, Westminster Street, and Main Street, which again is complaint-driven, so if you have other areas. We do our best to use our own brain to figure out the hotspots in town, but then try to respond to concerns from the public as well. A couple of high-level notes. We've had 12 Part I crimes for the year. At this point during 2015, we also had 12, so we're tracking the same as we were at this point last year. During 2016, year-to-date, the county has recorded 284 overdoses. 124 of those overdoses were heroin-related, including 28 fatalities. During 2015, it was 158 at this point in the county, with 53 heroin and 19 fatalities. So all of those county-wide significantly trended up. Thank goodness, we have not seen the same increase, but that's a constant battle to stay in front of here locally, and we have had a few. So that's all I have. If anybody has anything to add to the police report, we certainly can get the chief to weigh in. All right, I sort of jumped out of order here in terms of the agenda, so that we were able to do the truck bids while we were with the Town Administrator. So moving right along, we have questions and comments from the community? Anybody sign in? Tracy, the...
It just says the Scout Troop. So I don't know if they're willing to speak or if they were just signing in.
Do you want to introduce your guys or have any specific questions or comments? Any of the scouts want to speak?
Yeah.
It's not as hard as you think. I know you have something to say.
It's only a football practice.
Only a football practice, so...
And I'm involved, unfortunately.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else didn't sign up? Do you mind stepping up? I know you've been there for us, you know? So, and we do have an update for the Castlefield folks as well, which you may, I think you may be aware, but yeah, we certainly...
Did you want to mention that, or...
Yeah, no, I think that's fair. So we talked last month. We have a meeting, believe it, it's October 25th, which is, was it two weeks from tonight? So it is, it's a bit of a challenge in terms of getting, being able to get everybody to a table that needs to be there in addition to getting the attorneys. So we have a work session meeting with our legal counsel, so that this group can understand, not just, we certainly understand and empathize with your situation, but we have to understand what are the rules? What can we do? What are we empowered to do? What are the ramifications of taking different paths? So I think that's the point of that meeting, is to get this group up to speed, including me.
As long as you also understand that you set the rules. You make them, but anyway, that's fine, yeah. I was just gonna say, you know, I went through my notes, and I noticed that the first time I brought the matter before you was the 10th of November in 2015. So kind of 11 months and a day later, you know, I'm glad to hear that it's gonna be a substantive discussion about that. And hopefully, there'll be progress, yeah.
Hopefully, we can move it along a little quicker. Unfortunately, the government doesn't always move fast, so we'll do the best we can.
Yeah.
The only difference here is, here it's not necessarily gridlocked, it's just that it's an intermittent meeting of part-time residents that gather.
I understand.
It's a little different situation in Congress. Anybody else, anybody else have anything from the community that want to bring up a question? Do you mind stepping up?
Hi.
My name is Pam Merrick. I'm from Castlefield, and this is just a FYI. We had our first monthly fundraiser after our first, first fundraiser, and it's been a tremendous success for the Tree of Friends Foundation.
Wonderful.
And the way we connected with them was from here at a town council, oh, town council meeting, yes. So it was all very fortuitous for everybody. So I just wanted to let you know that things are going very well, and we have a monthly donation at our lovely Castlefield Pavilion, and anybody that would like to donate, my name is published, name and number, so I'd be happy to get your donations picked up.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And you probably heard the same thing, I know, from having conversations with them. They're lower than they want to be even on food going into the fall and November season, so...
That was actually my idea to, you know, instead of doing it two times a year, Christmas and Easter, where you get this huge influx of food, hundreds and hundreds of pounds that has to be transported, I thought it might be a good idea to get a smaller amount monthly, but a steady flow, because they never know how many, well, they don't call them clients, they call them friends. So we're all good with that. So I just thought maybe that would be a better idea.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is that something that we'd be able to support them with as like a drop-off location for residents?
If you could give us a little more detail, so maybe we can get that further out. Yes. If you want to go to the minister, the room people in, and then go to the guy, like, to make sure it's not like, what's happening? Yes, like, see, we're doing the family, you know, what's happening? If you could just report that to the people, okay? And we're, we're trying to break traffic there.
The whole room's not really...
It's on the traffic court.
Should be wearing your... She's wearing her Fitbit. Get two steps.
Okay, well, does everybody know where Castlefield is? It's, um, let's see, we're up Park Avenue, and then left on Bert Fowler, and just a couple of blocks, and you make a left on Chauncey Hill. And right when you go on Chauncey Hill, there's a beautiful pavilion on the right. And I'm collecting the first Thursday of every month between 8:00 and 5:00. And while the weather's still good, it'll be under the pavilion. But if the weather does get bad, which I hope it doesn't, our friend Michelle Lena is going to let me use her garage, because she'll be down south like a snowbird. Excuse me? Well, non-perishable items. Protein is always welcome, and we collect for children too, because sometimes they go home on the weekend with nothing. And some individual bags of Skittles, and, you know, just some cans of chili, tuna, things of this nature. Also, I guess like ramen noodles and everything everybody else eats, you know? Green bean, cans of green beans, corn, and, you know, whenever you're walking down the aisle, oh, that would be good, you know? So, okay. Anything else?
I'm sorry, you said first Thursday of every month. What were the times again, please?
A drop-off at the pavilion between 8:00 and 5:00, because we want to get it picked up before we have any animal adventure. And we have a, there's a couple that comes around. That's their job with the Tree of Friends. It's a married couple. And they come around, and that's what they do, just pick up donations. They got a great big pickup truck, so it's all good.
And if residents aren't able to make their drop-offs, would we allow them to drop off in the new town office? Plenty of boxes? So if residents aren't able to make that 8:00 to 5:00 timeframe, we can have them drop off here and then touch base with you and get it all lined up?
Right, right. And I can.
Or at our new town hall, excuse me.
Yes, your new town hall. I can leave my email address and phone number. Comments are always welcome, and people can always call me. I'll arrange for pickups, or I'll come get it myself, or I'll send my husband.
All right, thank you.
If you leave it with Kelly, if you leave it with Kelly, and then we'll get it.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, very good. Anybody else? Hearing none, then we'll move into committee reports. Councilman Smith?
I don't have anything to report because we didn't have a meeting this month. But, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but Mr. Gary, are we doing anything for Halloween this year?
Indeed, we are. Did you get my email?
Do you have it? Could you come tell us? I had a feeling that we might have missed that. I wanted to make sure. Sorry.
No, I think, I think we did miss it. We want to get the information out.
Yes, indeed. The Manchester Merchants Association is again going to be doing their Halloween parade and costume contest. This will be our fourth year doing it. It's a totally free event. They're going to have cake walks, pizza walks, games, prizes, treats. This is going to be at the Volunteer Fire Department Carnival Grounds. It's going to be located there. It is going to be October 26th, which is a Wednesday night from 6:00 to 8:00. It will be rain or shine. We've cleared it with the fire department that if it rains, we can move inside. We're not going to have rain. We're going to have nice fall weather. So it does start at 6:00. To participate in any of the events, like the cake walks or pizza walks, you do need to be in a costume. Young or old can come in a costume. There will be five trophies given away for prizes, or, I mean, for different categories on costumes. There'll be judges that are throughout the crowd all night long, picking out the winners. So again, this is our fourth year. Those that have been here in the past, you're familiar with it. The event is growing every year. Town council gets involved, fire department gets involved. It's, it's turning out to be a real nice event. And we do 26 to avoid any conflicts with trick-or-treating nights.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Let me get this information up on the website and Facebook, too. What's that?
I'm so sorry.
All right.
Okay. So our open house that we're having on October 30th will count, we should be able to count towards our, Banner City, yeah, that's where I'm looking. I'm just getting ready to say blue ribbon. Our Banner City. One thing I was just questioning is if anyone is planning on attending the Fall Conference, the 13th through the 15th in, of October in Solomon's. Because I believe that's one of our qualif, I think that's one of our qualifications, that someone attends fall and spring.
That's this week?
The 13th through the 15th. So yes.
So we don't currently have anybody registered, I think, for that? Let me, let me take, take that conversation offline to see if we can register, if anybody's able, and if there's something on the agenda that's meaningful. I think Councilman Howell attended last year, right?
Yes, I did.
So, yeah, why don't we, why don't we touch base afterward and see if we can get somebody there?
Okay.
Is that it? What's that? Everything's been covered? Uh, Councilman Howell?
Yes, I attended the parks meeting last night and have a few items. This Sunday, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., will be the autumn planting, so anyone that gave the, the gift of a tree, please come. Or anybody else interested, they'll be planting a tree at Charlotte's Quest Nature Center. That's Sunday, the October 16th, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. The photo contest, we did have some entries. And the dates and time will be announced later as to when they're going to be. We want to put them on display in the new town office and have judging up there and a little ceremony. Also, some of the master gardeners are having an Ask, Ask a Master Gardener program at the library. And it is Monday, October the 24th, and Monday, November the 28th, from 11:00 to 1:00. So if you have any questions, and they'll be down at North Carroll branch of the library, please come and ask them. And that's it.
Councilman Walter?
Okay, we had our regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission on September 20th. We had three order, items of business that day. We received an amended final plan for Western Abbey, which is the second part of Castlefield. They wanted to come back for another amended, amended plan because they changed from a single-level home to a double-level home, so we gave them final approval. Number one, North Liquors came in for their final approval, which we granted, pending a correction to their parking plan. They wanted to shorten the parking spaces somewhat to be able to fit more parking spots on the parking lot. But we were concerned that, that would cause them to overhang into an ADA sidewalk. You know, if you get a long pickup truck with a long bumper hitch on it, it would stick out and be our concern. So we approved that pending that change. And then Harold States came in with a preliminary approval, which we granted. They had to come back because they wanted to build a pumping station instead of having individual pumping. That's it. Am I correct? So that was it. We'll have a regular meeting next month, next week.
All right. Is there anything else?
Andrew?
Oh, I'm sorry, Andrew. Still have your time on from Homecoming?
Yeah. Well, Homecoming, Homecoming was Saturday, and there was over 800 people there. Yeah, a bit crowded. But I mean, it supports the school, so over 20 people, $20 a ticket. School's getting funded, SGA especially. And upcoming November 4th, 5th, 11th, and 12th at 7:00, Drama is having their play, East of the Sun, West of the Moon. It's a Norwegian folk tale. In the month of November, it was just put out to the students, but there's going to be an open-mic night for the students, but obviously, anybody can attend. I'll have more details next month for that. And for sports, the volleyball team is first in the county. Boys soccer is second, and then girls is third in the county. So I just feel like that's something, a big accomplishment for them. Football is away this Friday. And the 21st, they're back and play Sirtsville, and it's a pink-out game. They'll have T-shirts on sale there, but in case you don't want to buy one there, it's a pink-out. And November 4th, the last game, is home against St. James. I believe both of those are at 7:00 or 7:30. And there is a town employee with a birthday today who turned old, Gary Epley.
How old?
Old.
Just old. All right.
Your doors will be locked when you get home today.
Mr. Mayor, I have one last thing. I, I was over there, I was here multitasking. I'm not a good multitasker when you introduce the scouts. But I do want to recognize one scout that I've been working with very closely, and that's Matt Hayman. And Matt is going for his Eagle Scout, and he is working with the town to do a project at our new town hall. And it'll be a pavilion-type building with a picnic table, and that's for our staff to, to eat lunch at. So Matt, I appreciate all the work you're doing for the town, so.
Anybody else have anything? All right, just a couple of reminders here, or the dedication of Town Hall Police Station, Sunday, October 30th at 1:00 p.m. And the next town council meeting will be, I guess the, the idea is to have it there, but we'll, we'll see if everything's up and running and ready to go. That will be Tuesday, November 8th at 7:30. That's all we have. Motion to adjourn? Make a motion to adjourn? Hearing non-alleged, say aye.
Aye.
All right, good night.